Hazard. Your hint is that this is already marked on the plat.
Yeah.
Ding 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 ding. Thank you. Number three, if necessary, a letter is on file from a specialist certified by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Expert. There are no wetlands involved in this lot within this subdivision, so.
Good.
Okay. Number four, the requirements of the underlying zone are met.
Yes, they are.
Good job. Number five, the 50-foot building setback line is met per subsection C3C of this section. And that can be including the smaller revision to the landscaping plan if you agree with my recommendation.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then number six, proof of stormwater certification training has been or will be provided by the individual applying for the building permit. So this would be covered within your engineering approval, which is a condition of approval.
Yes, that's good.
Okay. Then that is all of your criteria and you are free again to what we wish.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with that recommended conditions of approval. I believe there was a second or did we get a second?
No, we didn't.
I.
We didn't get to that.
Really low.
Okay, so we have a motion really close. I'm doing it. I move to approve. Design review 2503 shoreline 2502 with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
And you're going to second it too, or?
No.
No.
But you said you're going to second for a minute. Second.
All right, we have a motion approved and second. All in favor.
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Okay, moving on, we're going to do design review 2504 and shoreline 2503, 918 Fernwood. This is a public hearing, so I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Second, motion and second, all in favor. Okay, with that, we have Kyle Edmister.
I'm the owner, I appear Kyle's not.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, Bill, belly up to the podium, please.
I'm not actually sure what I'm supposed to say.
Just kind of what?
My name is Bill Kearns and I live at, I live in Boise, but this home is at 918 Fernwood. It's at the south end of the Payette Lake Club. We're adding 557 square feet, of which 547 of it is on the west end of the house away from the lake. And just because of some roof revisions on the, on the east end, on the second floor, there's 30 square feet changing on the second floor. So anything towards the lake is, the house is not getting any closer to the lake. It's all within the existing envelope. It meets all the criteria of the square foot's coverage, the house envelope, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a really an expansion of the front of the house to take what is currently one large bedroom and make it two. And that's about it.
Any questions for the applicant? Could we get the?
Yes.
Pictures? Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? There's too much for this one? Okay, thank you.
So, as Mr. Kearns stated, this is an application for a residential addition on an existing single-family dwelling. It is within the shoreline zone, but as he stated, most of the addition occurring is in the upland side of the lot. So only a small bit is being added to the shoreline side of the lot and it is just roofing area and enclosing an existing covered patio area. So there is not further expansion in the shoreline direction. All of this fits within the setbacks. The one quirk that you have within your dimensional standards analysis is related to the eve heights on the northeast and southwest sides of the building. Those are not changing from what exists. The home is being recited and re-roofed and given a facelift in this process. But the actual height of those eaves is remaining the same as they were approved in the original entitlement back in, oh, I quoted the year at some point, but I think it was 08. Thank you. So those are not changing. They technically would not meet the side setback to one-half height rule that applies to side setbacks in McCall and was adopted after that time, specifically because we changed the definition or how McCall defines building height for those purposes to be the more restrictive of either finished floor or natural grade. So when we change that definition of building height itself, it reduced the height of that side setback triangle line that we're used to. But that's okay, because we're not changing the roof in this application. So it's allowed to be continued, be re-roofed, be remodeled, et cetera, as long as it doesn't get taller. With that being said, again, some of the things to discuss when you get to your deliberations are related to, this is a much smaller total dwelling and lot size than a lot of what you see on the lake, especially the lakefront lots. So from a comparability perspective, this one is substantially smaller than a lot of the lakefront homes that we're seeing. And in general, this is only 57 square feet over the cusp for qualifying for administrative approval. So unfortunately, because of those 57 square feet being ultimately really, really necessary in this remodel process, it was decided to go for the full planning and zoning review, take that extra time to get your review. But in my opinion, looking at this, this is a very low minor intensification of an existing use and always it looks to be compatible with the zoning code and all of the applicable regulations. There are a couple notes remaining from the city engineers review relating to just clarifying the state of the current stormwater system that was previously approved. I think I owe the applicant Bill some records from that old previous report, just so he can know what to clarify. But for all intents and purposes, everything's intact and might just need to be raked out, just like every storm drain in McCall is today. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the mayor?
Is that, is the uncovered patio new?
On which side were?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
It's on the lakeside.
No.
Slide 150.
No.
Oh, that's there.
That's there.
It's in red. I thought it was something important.
Yeah. Eric, say I'm not touching it.
Any other questions for Mayor? Nope. Okay, Nathan, we have much on this one?
Pretty straightforward, really small addition on the land side of the project. It has an existing stormwater facility that was approved previously. We had a small question about its condition and whether it's still being maintained and functional, but outside, outside that, we think this will meet engineering requirements. So.
Commissioners, any questions for Nate? Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anybody on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application? Maybe at star six if you're muted, but anyway, is there anybody here in the audience wishes to comment regarding this application?
I have one more comment, but Meredith and I actually discussed, she asked me to bring this up.
Okay.
Are you doing your planning or zone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I see.
Like she mentioned, we're 557 square feet and the rule is 500. And I asked her the question, if you had a 10,000 square foot house and you wanted to add 500 square feet, would that still apply? And she said yes. And she suggested that I suggest to you that when you rewrite whatever you're rewriting to maybe make the square footage requirement relative to the house or something impactful, because this process is pretty significant and pretty useful at her time and your time for a really small remodel. And so Meredith asked that I suggest that to you.
I will keep that in mind, in your notes for when we have any kind of code updates.
People will do that very often.
Maybe a percentage of the square footage would kick in too.
Yeah. I can do that.
Above the administrative approval.
Do that.
And with that, any other, anybody again, online or on the phone who wants to comment before we close the public comment? We'll close the public comment. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or staff before we go to close the public hearing and go to deliberation? Okay, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Just second.
The motion, motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. You opposed? Okay. Again, this seems like a very minimal, one of the most minimal ones we've had, I believe, with just a few feet over staff approval. It's pretty basic.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna make a condition of approval that it keep the red door, but I see it's already in there, so.
All beauty queen pink.
If it does go away, it won't be from us. Yeah, I think everything's pretty cut and dry on this one. So if there's any questions, I'm open for a motion.
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, wait, you gotta do your, you gotta do your items?
Yeah.
Do it all.
You gotta do it every time.
Make it look like, don't do those items.
A, is the project in conformance with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Any, any thoughts why? Beauty queen pink?
It just is.
Been there, proved many previously. Doesn't go against anything.
Already approved.
Okay. B, the project does not jeopardize the health, safety, or welfare of the public.
There's no issues.
C, the project conforms to the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as enumerated in 31601 of.
Yes. Yes, it is.
And this is impact area, right?
Tis. Good job. D, the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large.
No. There's none.
That's why.
Doesn't increase its footprint, I mean.
What's the address again?
918 Fernwood.
Okay.
It's one of the southerly wood streets.
It's off the South One Wagon or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Bailey.
E, if applicable, a subdivision designer view document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of the design guidelines. This is not a subdivision and that subdivision was created in like 1492, 1908, 1911, one of those time periods.
Not a whole lot of paperwork on that.
So we do not have one of those documents. F, for projects in the shoreline and river environment zone, the project will not have an unreasonable and adverse impact on the visual quality of its setting or the water quality. Asterix, asterix, asterix.
Turn the page.
Criteria A in the shoreline, development should not dominate the vistas of water to the extent that it has an unreasonable adverse impact on the visual quality of its setting. Thoughts?
Minus the pink door.
That's on the other side.
That's true.
No, because it doesn't increase on the size.
And it's turning brown.
Have more natural.
Blue.
Good point. Okay, B, development should be compatible in form, line, color, and texture with its surroundings. It might repeat the brown.
Yeah.
Exactly.
If you wanted to.
Yeah. There's brown. Yes, I repeat.
C, development should not significantly differ in scale or contrast to its surroundings to the extent that it has an unreasonable adverse impact on the visual quality of its setting. Are these changes adversely impacting the setting? D, structures should be clustered to allow for visibility through the site of the lake or the river and avoid a wall of structures as viewed from the water. You are on your paddleboard. What do you see?
Doesn't change anything that's already been existing for years.
Okay, and then part one of permit criteria, the proposed development must meet all applicable requirements of Title III and Title IX of the code.
Yes.
Number two, the plan identifies accurately the water pool shore contour, which in the case of, well, there is no area of special flood hazard applicable, because this is not the river, it is the lake. It does identify that too. A letter is on file from a wetlands expert at the Army Corps. Again, we are not affecting wetlands in this one. We don't need that. Okay. Number four, the requirements of the underlying zone are met. This is the R4 zone. That's within your dimensional standards. Okay, number five, the 50-foot building setback line is met per subsection C3C.
Yes.
Yep, you confirmed where the patio is. It's already existed. Job. And then number six, proof of stormwater certification training has been provided by the individual applying for the building permit.
It's a condition.
I believe it's a condition and that can be easily obtained even online these days, and we have the old one as well. Good. All right, then you are free.
To approve, we are 2504, C2503, staff recommended conditions of approval.
Okay. If a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You opposed? Right, motion is approved.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to conditionally you permit 2310, oh, excuse me, sorry, design review 2505 and scenic route. 2502 for 201 mission for Broken Horn Brewing. Do we have who? Oh, this is a public hearing, so I make a motion. We open the public hearing. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Nice. We're with. Okay.
Bob Dodge, 703 Saddlehorn and Broken Horn. Now we have a deck on the south side of the brewery and we have this dome there that is white and blue, supposed to look like a parachute smokejumpers. But we do feel that the time has come to upgrade that. And by doing so, what we want to propose is to put a roof over the top of that and, and take down the dome. And in so doing, we'd use the same materials, same colors. The only thing that we didn't really address in the pictures or the, that is that on the, because of the pitch of the roof is so shallow, we'd need to use a metal roofing there. But the metal roofing would be same color as the wings coat around the bottom of the, on the bottom of the brewery there. The other thing that we're not sure about doing, we want to include or expand a seating area there on outside for the summertime to the south. And it has, we want to use, hopefully someday put pavers in there. We're not sure just exactly when is when monies will be available. We do want to put some, with the new configuration of the deck, you'll have a steps off there. We're going to put some pavers there. And one of the things that I sent, I gave to the engineer and it shows a yellow area that would be, we would do right away to the south near we, yeah, there it is, the yellow there. To the south there and the orange, that's where we would eventually want to put some sort of covering, whether it be pavers or there's an astroturf type of thing that is, is a possibility. For now, we would just go ahead and use a pea gravel and be able then to use it that way. Of course, once we decide what kind of a covering we want to put on that terrace, then we'd have to deal with any water, stormwater retention and how we were going to do that. That's, that's pretty much the basics of it.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Pavers, I don't see that one yellow, but pavers are to the outside of the current deck, correct?
Yes.
To the, this is side.
Yeah, so see the, the yellow portion there would be the part that we would want to do this year with approval. And then the orange would be down the road when we could afford it as soon as we could, but we don't know the money will hold out or whether, what material we would use there yet.
And there's nothing on lot five or anything, correct?
Pardon me?
Oh, there. Can't remember what that.
Just an open.
Just a shed.
One lot. Lots been combined, so that.
Oh, for that old.
That correct?
Yeah. Okay.
In the picture.
And then on these drawings, it looks like there's four or five lots. Just disregard all that.
I can speak to that in this app report.
Okay, okay. Actually, any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Eric.
Okay. So Mr. Dodge reviewed a lot of the elements of this application. In those photos that are provided, you can see the existing state. The parachute is getting quite tired after many, many years of abuse in our cold climate. So this is an application for a similarly small but large enough size addition of covered area or structure size to warrant a visit to the planning and zoning commission because it is located on the scenic route. This project was initially approved back in 2012 for the initial construction and use of the brewery within the industrial zone. And it came with an initial, initial stormwater and drainage management plan that Nathan can speak to a little bit and some of the improvements that we're hoping to see as we get closer to the building permit process. As far as scenic route landscaping and why is South Mission Street a scenic route? It's one of those desired places of more scenic experience for the person driving through or hopefully biking through this area someday, either on their way south to the Norwood area or on their way north into the community through this north-south arterial. So our goal for the future is to cultivate a sense of arrival into McCall. Right now, I think I discussed within the staff report that this is one of the more pedestrian oriented use along South Mission Street that has done its plantings now after the South Mission Street improvement. So they held on planting those in the initial approval so that they wouldn't be uprooted during the scene, the South Mission Street reconstruction process. Now that that's finally done, we do have those plantings starting to be established. So with this, I'm not recommending or requesting any additional plantings because there's just not a lot of compatible space to put them, since this is the industrial zone and they've already planted quite a few plants in that area and on the site. One of the things to mention is that you'll notice within the site plan that on that exhibit that I pulled up, that it looks as though a parcel line goes through the existing deck. That was resolved during the initial deck addition in 2015 for planning and zoning purposes. And then it was discovered that there are a few remnant records of survey that have been approved through the city or the joint planning and zoning commission and the survey picture was recorded, but because legal descriptions and/or the tax combination form was never recorded, they don't actually combine them on the county assessors map until the tax combination form has been filled out. So Mr. Dodge has since discovering that formally finalized the combination. So it is one big lot of, I believe, the original six Mission Street area subdivision chunks, for lack of a better word. I review within your staff report, the commercial design guidelines, and there's a lot of great things going right with this application, especially the provision of pedestrian oriented facilities. There's already bike parking on the site covering permanently some of the seating areas for outdoor enjoyment for pedestrians is a great accommodation within this community. So doing so in a way that is better than a parachute, although it won't be as novel, is a good thing for prosperity. Relating to the future, hopefully paved area, I would recommend allowing for that to be an administrative approval at the time where the ideas about finances become a little bit more clear, given that design review approval is only good for 12 months and we can't really roll that over time and cascade it into different projects. And that leaves some space to resolve some of the stormwater questions that the engineering team has at this time to be incremental in that process where we deal with the deck covering and the small paper area in this engineering review. And then at such time as we want to improve that orange surface that was in, I'll scroll to that image for you, that be allowed via administrative approval because it probably will not have a similar roof structure since it's within the setback area too. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. I haven't received any public comments. Yeah, that's what I got. You would need to probably incorporate a condition of approval to mention that the orange terrorist area is not part of this, if that is your wish. But I would just recommend letting it be an administrative application if and when it's pursued.
And that's just the one, it's not.
Correct.
Right, Commissioners, any questions for staff? Nathan, any comments on?
Yeah, it's an interesting one. Obviously, a lot has changed over there. Fortunately, we finally got the road built, which this project actually designed their system assuming that we would get that road built. So stormwater system that they did put in is somewhat compatible with the new drainage facilities. This deck, this structure, these pavers, this potential area, there's a lot of questions there, but Morgan and I discussed this and, you know, we feel very confident that we can get to a place where this project will, will meet the city's engineering requirements, the drainage management guidelines. And, you know, what you're seeing here is really just kind of a more formalization of the existing situation. There is a comment that was made about the water meter sizing, and I'm sure we'll get through that. So in summary, we feel that this project can meet cities engineering standards. We've got to get through that engineering review and approval, but I anticipate we'll be able to do that successfully.
Commissioners, any questions, Nate? Right, with that, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're muted, star six. Is anybody there? Is there anybody here in the audience who wishes to comment regarding this application? That, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, any questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public comment or public hearing? And go to deliberations. And with that, I make a motion, we close the public hearing. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay. I think once again, this seems pretty minimal, cut and dry. I think the staff is going to work with the applicant as far as with the engineering. One thing we would note or to note is we do have a motion to approve to identify that orange area to be administrative in the future. I'm sure that will be discussed when they're doing the overall engineering, as far as this part of the application as well. But yeah, I don't. It's like a reasonable add-on or addition to, probably needed.
Should we run through the?
Do we have to? Yeah, no, she was just waiting for that, so I.
Don't blame me. It's not my fault. It's the Supreme Court. Hey, you ready?
No, but go ahead.
The project must be in general conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Any thoughts on why?
It just does.
Because the deck's already here. Talked about pedestrian friendly experience within this.
Well, not only improvements they've made over there already, as far as what you just went through, I mean, that's ammunition itself, I think.
Thank you. Love your wise. You're so good at this. You're getting so good at this. B, the project must not jeopardize the health, safety, or general welfare of the public.
I think it's safer.
Being very much of existing.
We're getting some steps. Great.
There's strong people.
Yep, it happens all the time. C, the project conforms to the applicable requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance as enumerated within section 31601 of this chapter. Hint, hint, we are doing a design review process. D, the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large.
Thanks.
No impact.
E, if applicable, subdivision designer view document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of design guidelines.
Obviously, it's not applicable.
And then for projects in the shoreline and river environment zone, is this in the shoreline and river environment zone?
No.
Okay, G, for projects in the scenic route zone, the project will preserve and enhance the scenic quality of the street or highway. And you've got some asterix.
Does it ever?
Where to go.
Yes.
So scenic route criteria one, the improvement should not block or disrupt the visit. So scenic route criteria one, the improvement should not block or disrupt the visibility of significant views or features. Number two, the improvement should be compatible in terms of setback, bulk height, design, finished material, signing, and landscaping with its surroundings and the desired visual quality of the scenic route. Why?
I'm really sad to see that, that parachute go. I mean, let's be real about this, but.
How sad are you?
But it'd be cool. You could take that, you could take the whole frame just to get on top of the roof or somewhere else and it'd really blow away. There you go. It'd be cool though, wouldn't it? It's just like, was it CBLA on this? Now the. I had the plane. They had the plane for the roof. That's the coolest thing. That's fine. I digress.
Yeah, doesn't, right, this one does it not?
You want it to be compatible in all the things with immediate surroundings and the desired quality.
It improves the quality.
Yeah.
It is compatible and it brings a quality.
Okay.
The whole new pair.
Okay. And we'll miss the parachute, but it is an improvement.
We got sold though.
Noted. Okay, with that, you are free. One hundred and sixty-seven.
So we want to add a condition of approval. Future expansion of a paper patio.
Terrorist area.
What?
Terrorist area.
Terrorist area will be an administrative.
The orange terrorist area.
It is a beauty, isn't it?
Move to approve DR 2505, SR 2502, staff recommended conditions of approval as amended.
Hold on.
And we have a motion and a second, all in favor? You opposed? Nice, motion carries. Okay, with that, we go on to our final item here. We get, well, one final items, conditional use permit 2310. For 1022 bitter root. This is a public hearing, so I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, we have Brent here or?
Hello commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to present this for you. I'm, this is my wife Anne, and we are seeking a CUP for 1022 bitter root. Home was built in 1998, has 6,400 square feet and seven bedrooms. We're seeking an occupancy of 14. We bought the home in August of 21 and we've used it for family and friend vacations and lots of fun. And we bought, when we bought this home, it was already a short-term rental and we've continued to use it in that way. And I would say we are committed to health and safety and being the best neighbors we can be. We have passed a safety inspection. We have signs all over the house about instructions for the garbage, McCall quiet hours and parking. In addition, all of these rules and expectations are in the renter agreement. We've had done right management as our property manager for the entire time we've owned the home. We do have noise aware monitors that are inside and outside the house that are to notify DRM if guests gets, if guests get too loud, especially after hours. Early in the fall of 21, we explored getting a CUP and did meet the neighbors and gave all of them both in written form. And those who are meeting the contact information for myself and DRM. Sorry, my phone glitched on me. And so the biggest issue is, of course, we hope there's never any issues with our neighbors, but if they had an issue, they can contact us. It's really important they have access to us at any time. Obviously, for immediate issues, they'd contact Dunright Management and for any lingering issues, of course, to call me as well. In October of 21, the Planning and Zoning preliminary meeting had no concerns at all. But after that meeting, we did meet with our neighbors and talking to them, we recognized we just will pause the process. We were fine with things as they were, as the ordinance is then, but the city of McCall, as we all are aware, created a new ordinance. And we knew we were required to seek a CUP. So in the winter of 2324, we did start again. And this is where I made an error in line of the conversations we had the previous summer. I thought there was an allowance in the CUP for an exception to go the ordinance beyond two per room. So at that time, I requested 19 for our seven bedrooms and that was an error on my part. And so again, we paused that, that process after the correction came at this hearing. And I will say it was noteworthy in the current packet before you, most of those letters from the Fall 23 application we had for 19 people. I'll also let you know the Spring Mountain Ranch leadership created a form letter and encouraged all of the residents to write in opposition. And many did, so that's why most of those letters look very similar to one another. I do care about all of my neighbors and especially my neighbor in close proximity at 1020, Mrs. Drabinski, who is here. She is a very good neighbor and especially good at keeping communication open. The P and Z requested I engage her early on. They'd asked me some shoves on the side. And she just requested if we could move, we had a fire pit in the back and move that closer. That fire pit was closer to her house, so it's now it's kind of further back and now closer to our house. And that was the only request she has made around that. When we strive to have guests neverly, never negatively impact our neighbors. We have not had any health or safety issues in our four and a half years. I've never been contacted by the city of McCall, the police for any safety or guest issues. Had a pretty good record in four and a half years, but it's not been perfect, to be honest. In four and a half years, I have been notified four times about guest issues. In December of 21, there was a guest who was parking on the street and so we had resolved that within an hour. That was not legal, obviously. In January of 2022, we had a guest who was trying to navigate a snowmobile trailer on the driveway and it was temporarily blocking bitter root drive. So after that, we immediately banned no snowmobile trailers renders can bring to the property. Then fast forward two and a half years, we didn't have any concerns that have been raised to me. Then the summer of 24, we had a party of eight individuals that were loud and a neighbor. And Alex, who's also a great neighbor, I think Candace's son-in-law, contacted me and DRM. And we went over there and they were being too loud after hours. So our DRM representative said, you need to be quiet or leave. And then they left that morning. I understand, I believe they did quiet down after that occurred. And I will say my four and a half years, that was the only confirmed noise issue outside of McCall's quiet hours in my four and a half years. August of this, of 24, about six o'clock, I was contacted by Alex again, who had some frustrations that there were too many cars and it was too noisy. And so he also called the police. So a DRM representative came there and the police and they got there, there were not too many cars and there was no noise issue. I'll say the McCall staff has been very helpful along the way. The one condition they communicated to me that I'm aware of is for increasing the water meter at my house. Currently, I have three-fourths inch meter and I think the number of current standards are, it was fine when I built the home, but the current standard is one inch. So I recognize that if this is approved, that would need to be a condition of the approval. You notice I could have requested 16 with seven bedrooms. But in deference to my neighbor, Ms. Drabinski, who wants me to have as few people as possible, to be honest, I think we make it work at 14. We also want to be good citizens of McCall. We have allowed the McCall hockey team, the Mountaineers, on several occasions to stay free of charge of our property. Also on several times, the Stars on Ice event, we've also allowed those participants to also stay at our property free of charge. So we to give back to the city. I was encouraged last month, last month, you approved my neighbor at 1026 Mister Phillips for 16 people. I would have you note, his home is 2,000 square feet smaller than mine and his property is one-third less than mine. And so I think that's just helpful for consideration and proximity there. We are, I'm hopeful in confirming his CUP, you'd confirm mine. We are committed to keeping health and safety for us, our guests, our neighbors. We always want to be responsible and respectful neighbors. Anyway, we can, we want to be vigilant to the very end. And so thank you for your consideration.
Commissioners, any questions for Brent?
You keep saying seven bedrooms, but fire department says six.
No, we have seven. Yeah, seven bedrooms according to the standards, yes. Sure, with seven, you could have 16, but you have two plus two. Sure, yes, yes, in this sense, yeah, this occasion, yes, yeah.
If you change the rules and regulations in you, you have to notify everybody within 300 feet or does a property manager company do that or how does that all come together?
I'm sorry, can you clarify the question, changing what?
If you change, change rules and regulations, hours of operation, number of cars and. If you do anything along those lines, how do you notify the upcoming tenants? And how much responsibility does the property manager have on that?
Yeah, so my property manager is here, I'll let her speak to that. I would say any significant changes, we'd not notify our neighbors. Basically, we follow the guidelines of McCall and any changes we've made to occupancy, we've notified our neighbors in 300 feet. And so any changes we would make, we would notify them.
We notify them, that means you notify them or the property managers notify them?
We, I personally notify them. That's my duty as the owner, notify them for this process and all these, I notify all those persons at 300 feet.
I should know this, but I need to have my memory fresh on how you do that. Cause I, I have a house on the lake too and that, that issues come up because I have, there's a short-term rental next door to me, so.
Yeah, so they're, they're supposed to, and again, 300 feet, make notification of what you're doing and how you're doing it. And the contact information for any concerns that are raised. Typically, we are just following all the obligations of the city, have no unique special rules that outside of the ordinances of the city. But anything we do, we communicate with 300 feet to our neighbors and I do that personally.
You sound like much hands-on than most people are that have that responsibility.
Yeah, well, I work very closely with that property manager. We, we want to be vigilant and care and so we want to be respectful and that there are concerns, we want to deal with them right away. We wish we could control every guest, but we try, but we're, I'm very engaged whenever there's an issue. And so Ms. Drabinski and Alex have been very good communications and even in their frustration, they've been very civil and courteous. And, and we want to limit the impact because there's probably the most impacted because of how the arrangement works on the back patio. And so there's the only house back there that's impacted. So I want to make sure that communication stays open.
Did you have another neighborhood meeting?
Not this time, we were not requested to, yeah, yeah.
Have you seen the executive summary?
I have not seen anything yet, no.
So explain to us what happened after you came before us a year and a half ago. It appears you continue to rent the property without a short-term rental license.
So I'll let my property manager speak to that as well. So we were under the impression that with the short-term application of the CUP, all the information was there for the permit. And so we, I had some friends and guests who kept coming there. We then notified by the city that the permit, the information that's in the CUP was not adequate for the permit. So at that point, we then stopped everything and didn't have any rentals until all that information was aligned then for the city.
So to be clear, that wasn't done right renting it for you as you personally.
So we, I think we had a few rentals that we had already had contracts for. I had some friends that came and stayed. I think there are a few rentals that also did occur in that, in that ambiguity, that we were sure we were going to appeal and that sort of thing. So there's an ambiguity about the process for us, but I'll let my property manager clarify that for you. But within that time, within that time, we, I had some of my, some, several rentals for me and my friends that sit up there, yeah.
I know Kelly knows.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Brent? Brent, did, Kelly, did you want to say anything now or? Sorry, as part of, part of the applications process, I don't know if there's anything you want to say now instead, since you are the property manager.
I don't know if I need to address myself. I'm Kelly Hill. Two, seven, eight, Rahay Lu, McCall, Idaho. So with regard to the continuing of renting as it was, there was a lot of confusion. And a lot of the confusion, I'll be honest, was Brian Parker. I don't mean to place blame, but he specifically said that we could continue renting as if we were to get the approval for this. So we continued to rent that, taken reservations and a lot of those reservations we had to fulfill. So as soon as we were notified that, you know, this wasn't approved, we changed the occupancy and we've been renting, you know, to up to 10 people, I don't know how long, but. So that's where the confusion was there, I think. But I do want to address some of the things that were written in. And like Brent said, that these were canned letters, that I even saw the letter that went out from the person, won't place any names there. But a person who manages the Spring Mountain Ranch HOA encouraged all of the residents in Spring Mountain Ranch to write this letter. He gave them the template and they wrote it. And as you'll look through your thing, you can see that this is the same letter. And again, a lot of these letters were kind of just submitted again, I guess, from the previous one because it says 19 on there. So anyway, I would, I'd hope that you would take that into consideration. The one neighbor that, as far as complaints are concerned, we have the one neighbor next door who has submitted a list of supposed complaints. But I took all of these, I took this and went back and talked to our staff. And several of these, I mean, there was no call, nothing to us. So how could we know? I mean, it says excessive noise. If we weren't called, we wouldn't know. On January 27th, there was 15 cars. This is in January. If you look at the driveway, there's, it's not possible to fit 15 cars in this roundabout. There's just, it'd be physically impossible. So, but anyway, we did, we did get a call and we did go by there on two different occasions. And I had our reservationist who was on call that night. She went by, she counted seven cars, she took pictures both times on two different nights. And then on the third night, it says that the number of people and vehicles was reduced to seven. No, it was seven all along. So I'm not sure where the 15 came in, but I certainly can tell you that there's no way possible in this little horseshoe-shaped driveway that 15 vehicles in the middle of winter would be able to fit there with all the snow load and everything else. So then on March 22nd, there was excessive noise at 9:00 PM, called DRM, which DRM, by the way, is done right management, just in case we didn't know that. There was no guests. We have no reservations on the 22nd. And we were not called. We have a call log of everything that calls. We have a Ring Central which records every call that comes into us. There was no call and there was someone there. On August 2nd, it says, on August 2nd to the 5th, it said, large family gathering, eight cars, Sunday had 22 adults plus children. There probably was, but it was in owner reservation. That was not a guest, so it wasn't a paying reservation. So that was strictly an owner reservation. And then again, when Joe was called on the 17th of August, the police and Joe showed up at the same time. They said that there was an overabundance of cars. They counted the cars, there were seven cars there and they both walked around. And they were playing music on the deck, but this was at 6:30 in the evening. First of all, I'm not sure what quiet time is after 10 o'clock, but anyway, they even said, we don't hear anything. And they had to walk underneath the deck to even hear the music going. So they both agreed that this was a waste of their time. So anyway, I just want to say that, you know, out of, we, again, we, we've always tried to be really good neighbors. We make, I mean, I know that they have my personal cell phone number. I told them to call me anytime. We've responded to anything that's ever been, whether it's, you know, we, we always jump on it and take care of it. But it's, if you look at all these complaints here, there's really only one that I can actually see that was actually after 10 o'clock. So I would just hope that you would take this into consideration in reviewing this. And the fact is, is that, you know, the neighbor down the street did get approved, it's on the same street, same neighborhood. So the impact shouldn't be any different than it would be for this home. Thank you.
Any questions for Kelly?
Is there a certain amount of complaints that you get? If you have 10, you got too many. If you got five, you got, you're not too many or?
I'm sorry, what was, what was the question?
Is there, is there a limp, uh, complaints that you get? If you, if say you're doing what you're doing right now.
That's a very good point.
Use permit and you got 10 complaints, is that too many?
Is it complaint or a verified?
Yeah, okay, that's what, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so that's where I'm going with it. Yeah, I mean, because you, you know, if you look at, I can give you a handful of instances and not just in our, in our pool of rentals. But I've heard it from other people that you have a neighbor who doesn't want it there, they're going to keep calling and it can be. And it can be a nuisance to the city and, and, and our public resources. But again, a complaint shouldn't even be filed unless it was after ten o'clock, right? Isn't that the quiet time? There's only one here that was even said that it was after ten o'clock, but we were never called. So I can't even verify this was actual. So I can't do anything if it's, if we're not called.
Just on a case by case basis.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. And I would, but again, yeah, if, if we got three calls in a year, that would be excessive. We would, we would never let it get to that point. We have never, ever had a property that we've had three calls of complaints that were like noise complaints ever. And I've been doing this since, I've been doing this for over twenty years in McCall.
Chairman, can I ask a question? Kelly, can you give an example with the noise aware devices of like what level of activity?
Yes. So these are devices that are put inside the home and on the outside. We program them to, for various times, and it's a decibel. So if, if the noise gets like, let's say it's starting at eight o'clock in the morning from eight to, I believe it's eight P M. That we have them set, it's a certain level. From eight to ten, it goes down. It drops down significantly. So because we want to know if people are not winding down. Then after ten, it drops down tremendously and it's a whole different level. So it won't notify us if, if they're within that range. If it goes over, the first time we don't get notified. It sends a text automatically to the guests and says, your noise has been increased. And most of the times they're just going, oh, my gosh, you know, we, we didn't realize it. We're just got excited, you know? If it happens the second time, if they get another alert, it goes to us. So we get notified as well as the guest. And it says, this is the second time, this is your second notice. And if it happens again, you're at risk of being, you know, evicted. And we have a little message there. So that's how they work. But they do, it does go down and you know what I mean? And, and again, we haven't been notified within this because it was, some of these complaints are at six thirty in the, you know, in the evening, which is not quiet time. It, it wouldn't have registered if somebody was, you know. I mean, we do have them set that if it was blaring, blaring music or something, we would be notified. But obviously it wasn't within that. And anyway. Any other questions?
Hey, Meredith, definitely.
So this is a revised application. So there was no point at which the application was withdrawn. So much as sat on to decide where to go next with it. So for that reason, it doesn't have a new application number. And for that reason, all of the previous comments are still included within the record. Because that is what we are supposed to do is keep the full record for you. So when we get to the public comment summary, I can clarify which comments are new and which ones are old, which there's a very large discrepancy. So this revised application remains to be for a conditional use permit to operate a short term rental with an occupancy exceeding ten persons, which is the threshold that the updated short term rental code set for coming to get these conditional use permits. It was previously set at nineteen persons being the maximum based on a four persons per bedroom occupancy. And we reduced that as a community down to two persons per bedroom, because the intensity of occupancy at four persons seems to be one of the really, really challenging points with community members. So to reflect back on what happened with this application originally in December of two thousand and twenty-three, the application was heard for that higher occupancy of nineteen persons based on also a bedroom analysis that has kind of been massaged and refined over the course of the implementation year for this short term rental code, where there was a certain point at which bedrooms were defined for the short term rental code as, for example, having a closet or different furnishings and then related to permanence of dwelling. And so we've become a little bit more flexible in the administration of what is a bedroom where it needs to be a unique room with a door that shuts or could shut if you wanted to shut it. But the discussion of closets is not included in that any longer because it, that doesn't fall into the building code either. So in the reapplication and revisitation of this application, there are six code compliant or defined bedrooms determined. And then two additional sleeping areas determined. So they could ask for up to that six person, three person occupancy. But they've submitted an occupancy for fourteen persons that would match the necessary requirements for the bedrooms and occupancy standards based on the updated city code. There is a summary of the history of what happened during the two thousand and twenty-four year following planning and zoning's initial recommendation for denial to city council that was based on incompatibility with the occupancy standards that's been resolved with this reapplication. So during, should I pause and take a, should we take a break?
Keep going.
Okay. Are you leaving the room?
Just about thirty seconds.
Okay. I'm just gonna have to take five minutes so that we have everybody available.
We never did break.
Two minute break.
Yeah.
Urgency break. Four hours of emergency break. I offered one earlier. Man, I'm missing out. So like.
I don't know how long I've been sitting here, but it's been a while.
Ready?
Okay.
Okay. I'm getting back to it. So twenty twenty comes along. And I think that I can admit as the assistant staff at that time, and a lot of city staff can admit that as we were exiting the grace period of the new code in two thousand and twenty-three and entering the full compliance period of two thousand and twenty-four, there remained a lot of questions as to, well, what does this mean? What does that mean? How do we interpret it? How do we implement it? Because all of this was a very new comprehensive code section. So Kelly was in regular communication with the city saying, well, how do we deal with this situation? And how do we keep renting when we have all these reservations that were honored and we were in the short term rental process? And we don't really know what's going on. And we weren't able to answer every single email, every single second as city staff. So there were incidents in early two thousand and twenty-four of done right management honoring reservations that they had made under the grace period. And it wasn't fully communicated by the city what the, what that interim period should look like. And it ultimately did not seem to be fair to the property owner and done right to go after them for honoring reservations that were previously made, so much as working towards finding a pathway to compliance. There was a period when we were stuck in the what is a bedroom, what is not a bedroom time period in two thousand and twenty-four where we alerted all of the interim had applied for CUP, short term rental property owners that they needed to cease renting based on not having acquired their CUPs. But then the feedback was if we cease renting entirely, that, that isn't really fair. There should be a mechanism to continue. And so in mid two thousand and twenty-four, city council, the attorneys who we have online, including Bill Punkinney, who helped us out extensively with this, created the pathway to self limit occupancy through filing affidavits with the short term rental applications that would allow the properties with five bedrooms or more to continue renting to less than ten occupants by submitting like a sworn affidavit that that's what they would be doing under penalty of perjury, which is not a great thing for your resume. And so the property owners did finally submit that. And the, I can't remember the timeline between August when it was still, we were still figuring out what the rental situation was and what was continued and what was a bedroom and what was not. But finally, an affidavit to self limit occupancy and then continue into the conditional use permit process. Both were filed and then the reapplication came in. So I think that we've been still on the path to making as good a progress as we can in this constantly moving field where it's, it's hard to know what, what the rule means live when you're dealing with it or when you're dealing with a group. We did receive multiple submissions to the short term rental complaint portal from a few of the neighbors who have graciously resubmitted a lot of those contents to my office as we're still figuring out how to integrate the short term rental compliance process with the land use process. So Amanda Payne, the short term rental administrator summarized the information she'd received from the public and the way that she navigates the compliance process, which is if we receive a complaint, then staff, either Amanda or Brian at the time, or myself at this time reaches out to the property owner and or property manager and discusses what the complaint is, tries our best to verify, you know, was it excessive noise? Do we have a recording? Is it too many cars? Are they still there? Do we have a photo? And then what mitigation was taken in those instances? So I've, I've got that record within the conditional use permit folder at this time. But I think it's important to take the testimony of the surrounding neighborhood this evening. When we talk about public comment for the revised version of application, I've only received a couple. I believe three total comments on this revised application. One of them remains in the listed format, just, just basing their contention with the application on overall high occupancy and the, the concept of short term rentals and neighborhoods not being compatible with their thoughts. But with the new revised application, I do believe that steps can be taken and or conditions of approval considered to help this get to a place where it can be recommended for approval. So you'll see a condition of approval that still requires the noise aware devices. So that's memorialized. And it, it'll be a responsibility to upkeep those, but you do a good job of that. There is a condition of approval relating to parking. And so a rev, to the parking plan has been submitted at this time to require and limit the number of parking spaces to match the number of bedrooms or sleeping areas in this case. Because it's kind of in an in between area seven, parking spaces seems logical for the property and also allows for the accidental trailer if one happens to be brought on site. But they've instructed guests not to bring trailers because it's tight in there. So I, I think it's important to discuss, you know, what seemed to be the remaining problems with this application, if there are any. And then as we review the conditional use permit criteria, consider any of the tools we've used with neighboring or other conditional use permit, short term rentals to determine if there are ways that we can condition mediate mitigation for any of the problems that may still occur. I think when it comes to annual reviews, we have a good example of what the contents of that can be from a successful review. So you could consider reflecting back on, I don't know if that was one or two meetings ago where we had our first short term rental, high occupancy annual review and, and the contents of that and what you might like to see moving forward if you do choose to recommend that this moves forward. But your insight on that can be helpful for any city council deliberation that may occur. And with that, we'll stand for any questions. I'm doing my best to be caught up on the record of this one, but it is one of the Brian Parker day ones. So I'm, I'm doing my best to decipher his thoughts.
Whereas I see on the site plan, we have seven parking spots. And you're saying take two away or no longer asking to take two away?
I think that initially Brian counted them differently than I do. So there need to be at least seven and no more than seven spaces. The way that Morgan was looking at it was she was seeing some parking spaces within the frontage or easement area. And I haven't had a chance to look at that. So I've kept the condition recommended that we resolve the parking plan. But it's a good question.
Okay. Because again, I mean, I'm.
Yeah. I think the comment was that this driveway has been so.
Okay. That makes sense.
Twelve foot utility and snow storage easement. And this property has a looped driveway.
Yeah.
It's well beyond the twelve foot though. Anyway.
It does go.
I'm very familiar with this property. I've sold it, been in it many, many times. But yeah, the driveway, I mean, from where you can even park because of the way it's sloped up, it's certainly past. And I've been there winter time.
I think it's because the drawing didn't show it correctly.
Yeah. I think it was an updated, yeah, I think he had an updated drawing. So this, you know, I, I mean, I can see that property easily handling the seven spots. And we totally had it there. So but I think they're probably updated drawing. So.
I, like, I think we'll get through it and, yes, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Yeah. So I think we've received that new one that I think shows the setback from the front area. I believe that seven spaces makes sense, given there are a total of eight sleeping areas. And I've gone to Airbnbs for bachelorette parties or whatever it might be. And sometimes we don't carpool. So I, I think it's within your discretion as the commission to think reasonably about the parking that will arrive. Now that we've kind of worked more on the what is a bedroom issue since the last time you saw one of these. And it's not unreasonable to imagine a world where there's not just a fifteen passenger van or a collective arrival at the site. And instead, there's a more realistic arrival where maybe you have six or seven couples that are on a vacation or whatever. You, you can't predict these things because they're all going to be different. But it's probably important to fit everyone instead of getting them on the public roadway during snow removal season.
You're looking at this drawing and it has a seven numbers, one through seven in the driveway. That's when you're, you're on now. Is it?
Scroll down a bit. Yeah. That we're showing, I mean, showing the distance.
Oh, I, yeah. Okay.
The one is like two hundred and twelve or so of your packet. I can share it on the screen.
Oh, okay. And we're looking at, number's always a big up there. I never look at them.
That's pretty low.
You know, it really is. I have to admire what you did this time.
This is the revised one, right?
Yes.
What page would be?
Two, twelve.
Any other?
Was Morgan's concern that when there's ten cars, then there, or it says one, two, three, four are now five, six, seven, eight? No, her concern was based off the previous version, which if you were to compare two, twelve to two, ten, you know, the cars are closer to the property line. She was worried that area might actually be wind road with tons of snow. But that drawing doesn't show where the road is. It, it, it suggests that that's the road. It doesn't show the property lines. And I guess my, my is, our streets department is not concerned about this parking issue. And we're, we're more than comfortable with the revised plan that shows that they have. However, many parking spaces and all of them are not an issue for the public.
So the road that continues on past the three part parking area right here and goes up to the side of the, what is that? Is that just snow storage?
There was a loop back there that goes to a garage that's back there, but they're not using the garage anymore. And they just asked for snow storage back there. I mean, just because I know the property. Sorry, I just knew the property. It's a, it's a, but it's not used as a garage anymore. So cars don't go back in there.
Okay.
I have one comment to that. I, I wasn't sure of the rules. And so I'm clearing with Meredith. You'll see there's a big garage in the front. And those can easily host two cars. And so I wasn't sure that was legal to count the garage spaces, but those are easily used. So really, cars five and six easily fit inside that garage right there. So that was, I wasn't sure if we were allowed to count those or not. So.
Any other questions for Meredith? Nathan? Nope. Nothing. Nothing. Wow. Okay. With that, this is a public hearing. So we'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone wishes to comment during this application? See anybody that's strange? Right. We have somebody here in the audience that wants to comment? Just remember to have your name and address, please.
Yeah. I'm almost getting through tonight. Dr. Alex Killian.
Yeah, I'm almost getting through tonight. Dr. Alex Kelly in one seventy Willie Lane. I was at ten twenty right next door, living with my mother in law, not by necessity, but because I like her by choice. And so I'd like to make sure the record captures that.
That's a nice guy.
Yeah. Nice mother in law. So I want to, so a lot of the topics I'm going to talk about here, I'm just going to read to be a little bit more efficient. I want to cover a couple to begin with. The driveway size contradiction. So we have this up. Kelly said before that there were never more than like seven or eight cars there. We have submitted evidence stating otherwise. And people do park in that back driveway that you're saying is for snow storage. And so they do go back there. They do use that back garage. And so we have had eleven or twelve cars back there. So I I guess for this, for this reason, it's the it can at least hold seven. That's I can confirm that. I think that's fine. But for the contradiction of when they were renting previously, when they shouldn't have been renting without a permit, that there were a lot of cars there and pictures that I've sent into the city to to confirm that. On the point of writing letters, nobody's forcing people to write letters. So I just want to just make that point about the H O A point. And that's the reason or the reasoning behind if the other property has been approved for additional people that this one should be two. I think if anything, this exacerbates that problem. Like it's the same street to places with additional people is going to cause a greater disturbance to the neighborhood. So probably I'm going to crank through this. So I want to cover two main issues. With the application, first, renting without a permit, which we've already have talked about here. And then Brenton Dunright management still being unable to prevent residential disturbances associated with large groups. So following multiple noise issues in March, we notified the city Brent was renting without a permit. They had the rental listed on both Dunright's website and Airbnb for nineteen people. So not only did they not have a permit, but they were advertised for too many people at that time. Listings were still up until late July when a party with college age students occurred. I contacted Brent and Dunright multiple times over the weekend and they were unable to resolve the the noise and the number of cars. I've also submitted that to the city and there's documentation and evidence of those instances. So at this time, we had wrongly assumed that they did receive that rental permit, but they didn't. So they were still continuing to rent to those large groups. Again, in August, and I submitted evidence of this. And so at this point, I I talked to Kelly, I talked to Kelly about these issues, raised to the point that they didn't have a permit, that they needed to figure this out, or at least we wanted clarification. Went to City Hall several times to get clarification and said they didn't have a permit and they were still trying to contact them to resolve this issue. Yet they continued to rent at that time. So about a week later, then a large bachelor party was there. This was the one where the police were called. It was extremely loud beer pong in the backyard. Lots of cars that have submitted videos of what it sounds like in our home. And so all that information is available. These issues and many others were all logged. And so what I'm hearing is is not in accordance with the evidence that we've submitted. And so I just asked that you take a look at those documents if they are available to you. Yeah. So lastly, I guess, so if we should be giving out conditional use permits to people who we can trust to follow the rules and kind of abide by those. They they claim that they didn't know about the permit situation, but we have records communicating that clearly to them, and yet they still continued to to break the laws following that. And I think that's my timer, so I'm going to add with. Yeah, I think it's it's this idea of when you have that many occupants, you're set up to have parties and they haven't been able to demonstrate that they can avoid the noise issues. Kelly, you said before when you came over that those noise monitors don't work and that you were going to replace those. And so I don't think noise monitors and the fines to guests have proven to be effective. Thank you.
There'll be rebuttal.
A bitter root. And I've lived there for twenty two years, gone through every owner of the house that there's been. I I took, I made this calendar just because I just needed to do something for since twenty twenty four and just time to kind of record. I do have to say that there probably are some discrepancies because when you send people out to check how many cars there are, there may not be that many cars there at that time. But on the twenty fifth of January, there were trailers and cars. Twenty sixth, I had twelve cars down here. Twenty seventh, I had fifteen cars and trucks and trailers. Twenty eighth, I have fifteen cars. So with fifteen cars, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're all staying there for the night. That means that they're there, they're there during the daytime, they're evening, partying, whatever they're doing. So and I didn't write everything down. I mean, some of the guests are just fine. So I just wrote down the most notable ones. In my log, where I put excessive noise and I put that nothing was, nobody was called. That means because we tolerated it. So I didn't call anybody. I have to say that I've been an homeowner for six different homes. I'm seventy three, just about seventy three years old. I have never one time, except in the last few years, called the police, the fire department. You know, owner of property, if I was in a reserve, you know, in a residential area that had renters. Never one time have I called anybody in all of those years. So I'm not a chronic complainer at all. I do have to say that with this cup application for fourteen, I am relieved. Because when Mr. Brett Peterson first bought the house, he wanted twenty eight to nineteen people. So going down to fourteen, I think is much more manageable that than twenty eight, nineteen. Because when you get fourteen, that means you're going to have nineteen. That means you're going to have twenty there. That means that eventually those people are going to be sleeping in there. Or partying. That's what usually does happen. So I hope that in considering this cup application, that that you do take in consideration that a lot of my we'll call them complaints, my concerns have been repeated. There, there's a pattern of a large term rental. There's a pattern of excessive noise. If I can hear from my house, from inside the house in the summertime, if I can hear them from inside my house in the summertime, I consider it's too loud. If I can hear from outside when I go up, you know, when I'm taking my dog out at night, I consider it too loud. And that's just, when I talked to the police one time and asked them what too loud was, they said there isn't a time issue on the the loud is loud. If it's loud, then you call them. I think I've called them, what did I have down there, twice? Twice last year. And if it's loud at six thirty and they're starting to drink, then it means it's going to be really loud by ten thirty at night. Is how I go. I feel like I'm an expert in short, larger, short term rentals right now. So when you are deliberating this, fourteen people is perfectly reasonable for this house. But I do hope that you consider that the complaints have been repeated. They've been ongoing. And that's what I came for. Thank you.
Okay, there's nobody else in the audience. Once again, is there anybody on the phone or online wishes to comment? Okay, we haven't. So, okay.
And I just wanted to address the noise aware. I did say that those devices weren't working and that was correct. We have moved to a new device. We didn't get them installed as soon as I had anticipated, but we did replace them. And as you will see, there haven't been any, I don't think any problems in the last six months, but we did have an issue with those noise aware devices not working all the time. If they were unplugged and whatever. So anyway, that's been addressed. So just wanted to clarify that.
Can a renter unplug the noise device?
In the last ones, they could. These new ones are are higher up. They're also an occupancy determine, they determine occupancy and that's gauged by the number of voices that they'll hear. So we are it it's still in beta, but it's been pretty accurate. So obviously, if it if it says that, you know, we have you know, eight people in this rental and it's detecting nine, we're probably not going to raise the alarm. But if it's, it'll say there's, we hear, you know, it'll come back at twelve potential voices, then we know something's going on. So like I said, it's been in beta right now, but it's, it's very, been very promising.
They're all hooked to the internet, obviously. And they're battery powered or hardware?
I believe there, I, that's a good question. I don't know, and I should know that. I, 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 yeah, where'd you? I believe, I I can't answer that. I I'd be guessing. Okay.
Yeah, first of all, I want to reiterate Candace and Alex are excellent neighbors and they communicate well. To Candace, I just want to say she's texted me many times throughout the year about the fire wise. And so I just want to make sure she knows that if I I can't solve problems I don't hear about. And so I want to make sure that she doesn't feel ever stuck in a bad situation. About last year, again, Kelly was in constant communication with the city. The first moment we heard from the city, they asked us to we need to stop, we stopped immediately from mid-August. We had not off the internet everywhere. And then we did not, when we were approved after all the inspection, the permit was in, or then did we start with the approval we got from the city? And our first guest, I think, was in late January. Now, I had a couple of times where I brought some friends there in in the fall, but we complied very closely with every communication we received from the city. And I apologize, my first drawing was not accurate. I'm not an artist. But thank you for understanding that difference there. And one more thing, there, that driveway does go all the way back there. The back garage is a game room, so no one's used that as a garage. And again, I think some guests in the summer could come back there, but that would, and it's fine back there, but I think seven cars would be our maximum, no matter where they are. But there's plenty of room, but seven would be our max period. So.
I think you could also consider interventions on the site plan, like a curb stop. We've used that previously when we've been worried about cars going places that they shouldn't based on the planning documents that are submitted. So in your discussion or with your questions or in any recommendation that you make, if it's one that is inclined towards approval, you could consider things that deter cars from going beyond the propane tank. And then that could be dragged away. Those snowplow can push snow all the way back there if they need to, but there are ways to manage. Other things to discuss would probably be how to navigate any enforcement in a way that is a lot more clear. And or any discussion of how you would like to see events or noise managed on the site beyond the minimum requirements of the code, if that seems to be a verified issue.
Right. With that, I don't believe we have any other public comments, so we'll close the up comment section. Any questions you have any questions for staff?
We denied the CUP original. What was the date of that?
The date?
Yeah.
It was December fifth of twenty three. And that was based on the occupancy not matching the occupancy standards for the code.
I've heard that there's some short term rentals in bigger cities that the owner has to, is in the same building with them. Is that true?
That's a code requirement in cities that are not McCall. So I think the one that comes to mind is New York City, regardless of the occupancy of the rental requires an owner to be on the property. We do not require that.
Was there ever any need for something like that? Or any thoughts of doing something like that too?
Oh, I think this is thought of all kinds of things.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem possible.
So it was determined that that was not a reasonable regulation, given the vacancy of a lot of the dwelling units in the community. So it would be weird to have somebody come up to their vacation home and camp out with some friends.
I'd be affected.
He'd probably make it worse only if he were there. But they realistically, I mean, we have the other one in the neighborhood that I think with one point similar concerns that we were able to do, you know, kind of a probationary period. And I can see that potentially if we needed to, to make sense to give them a chance to, they've got everything updated. They're going with much smaller density. And like I say, with this one, I'm very familiar with the house. It's a very large house. It could easily hold more if needed, but obviously they're going for the lower amount. So I mean, it's not like there's going to be cramped in there. I think it's, you know, by far has more than enough parking, so it will keep things, especially if they're not allowing for for trailers to be on the road. I think they've really limited the potential of the house for what it could be considered in the size. I think with the additional, some of the newer monitoring is a good thing. I mean, that'll keep track of it pretty good. If we have the one year probationary period, we'll be able to track that similar to what we did the other one. And if everything goes well, we can move it to the staff. Who will, barring any changes to code between now and then, which I think there's still discussions of that, but again, we're going with what we have now. I think the curb thing, obviously, if it's past the propane tank, it'd be an issue, but then just have to make sure it's filled up. I think.
We have the monitors to record.
I don't know. That's a good question. That's scary question.
They don't, they do not record any voices. They'll be in the garden. Oh, I'm sorry.
These devices do not record anything. They give us a reading of decibel. We do have a report that we can print out from any home.
Yes, I'm just be interested to understand the police department's use of the report. As far as the person. You've heard this discussion that there's technology out here that can solve this problem and using the technology effectively to say there's a report and you get the report, then that gives the police evidence to say or not.
I like it.
I think it's the weird spooky blurry line of do people want to be surveilled on vacation? I don't know. That's really not up to me, but it's interesting.
So monitor desk.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think that's purpose and that's what the owner wants to do.
I think the, if there were a recording triggered or something, that's where things would get spooky.
Yeah, an ambulance goes by and then.
Yeah, could get wild very quickly, but.
Be interested, I'm I'm be interested to hear from the PD a little bit about this, about how how it goes about because, I mean, we don't have any concerns about where the cars are parked on the site plan. We're well aware that there are snowmobile trailers that are on that street parked all the time because our staff goes to work every morning and they see it. Now, they're not getting a ticket because we're not snowpawing at that time, but they're still blocking the road. So that's just the nature of this use. And it's harder for an owner because you know, they may show up there to pick up their guests so that they can snowmobile. I mean, there's no to park. So it's just a reality of the town. I think as long as it's not when it's when it's snowplow time, then we don't have an issue. And this area has not been brought up to me as an issue with snowmobile.
Could be a reasonable request to see an example noise report. Kelly, are you able to pull an example of what it looks like?
Easy on vacation and I don't know.
You can also request more information.
No, I mean.
I I respect Kelly and Joe. I know they do good work. I am deeply disturbed that you continue to rent this property after you denied a CUP. I don't believe we should reward you by giving you one now. And I, you know, your your perception of your relationship with the Dubinskis is vastly different than theirs. And they documented the problems with your rental. Is my opinion, or disagrees with me, that a hotel does not belong in a residential neighborhood. And the fact that you would have two in a short distance from each other exacerbates the problem. But I I'm not going to see a way there to approve this.
I don't think we could limit one person's ability to go for a conditional use permit based on
Against the last.
Somebody else's. And these are not hotels based by any, any definition of a hotel or commercial use. So I mean, we can't really refer
To code and state law, they are not correct.
Or not a hotel. So we can't, they are very large home that's needed through various areas. So.
Well. The reality of the whole thing is, I've got a short-term rental right next to me, right next to my house. And they have never done any of this stuff. Three hundred feet notification, rules and regulations. We've never seen any of it. They move in there and they take advantage of us. Well, not all summer long, but it, it, off and on for most of the summer. And when I'm reading this, this rental agreement for, I guess it's you guys, there's a lot of things in here that I would, I didn't even know what was going on, and I would have liked to know them because I would have had grounds to be able to do some things, you know, and quiet them down, but it just hasn't worked that way. And it just, it doesn't seem, hasn't seemed to change any, any bit at all. So.
And as a reminder, Tony, this segment of code is not applicable in the impact area. It has not been adopted by Valley County.
That was a good point. That's, that's part of the issue also. But you feel cheated. When, you know, because of the fact that in, in the, in the city limits, yeah, it's on, very structured and on deck all the time. And out in our area, it just, it's called the Valley County Sheriff. And that's a lot. I, I've bitched about this so many times that it just calls on deaf ears. And so limiting these people to one or two or doesn't make much difference to me. I'll just have to say it that way.
With large turn, large rentals, do they still have to do all of the same things as the small short-term rentals? They do inspections every year, send the letters out to all the neighbors. I know as part of that you need to say, here's a contact, do you have any issues? Just, Tony, you just mentioned when you were reading through the rental agreement that Don and I has for the rental. I wonder if it wouldn't help even if sending send out a copy to the people around to saying, this is what people agree to. It'd be.
If I, if I sent some to people around, they're what you're saying?
Yeah, to, to the neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
And so then they have a copy of that.
Well, as I bring, yeah, as far as like with this one, if they're within the city, you'd send out that with the same notice.
Yeah.
It would say, here's what they invite by.
Yeah, it's just the usual problem. Is the county, is the city going to do what the county does? And there's county.
Separate thing for you.
Yeah, exactly.
Within the city, I mean, going forward, like and that'd be something maybe with some code revisions or something that we require, that could be required.
But I mean, if you're managing yourself, there's difference, so.
Yeah, it's different.
Different.
And then you get some people and they say, well, I've heard things before, and you try to enforce some of these rules and regulations on them, and they call bull onions. So it's, yeah. It's, you gotta have the backing of the city and or the county in order to make something like this work, you know?
And any other thoughts?
No, I mean, this is your first go of it, so this is like, this is trial run, so you want it to be successful. When, when it comes back here next year, if there are issues, then it's going to be like, well, we don't know about that anymore. So that's kind of on us on on the applicant to do that, so.
So I think you could defer back to the criteria that you've got. And then you also have time, this is a first touch on the re-application, to consider if you'd like to see like an example noise report or consider a revised site plan that, that takes care of the parking and decide whether you want to see those things now or leave that to city council to figure out. You also are a small group this month. So, and it sounds like you are almost tied in your thoughts. I haven't taken account, but you can also make sure that you get input from your other commissioners, but we could start with the criteria and see where that gets us. If you'd like.
Tony, what's your thoughts? I mean, if we're I don't know how far we want to go in that. Are you thinking, well, continuation?
Well, I think.
I think we got the updated site plan that's pretty much shows the distances, and there's no question. That's, I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, I think you could, you could start going through the criteria. You don't have to be in deliberations to review the criteria. You can review them and, and ask questions about what could I do to make this make more sense, for example, for the neighborhood? I, I think that I still see, maybe you need to see an example of how dealing with noise actually works out in the wild, because I don't have any examples. All I have is concerns from the neighborhood about the history of noise coming from the property and filtering onto other ones. And you do have to, within your deliberations, ensure that there isn't whatever excessive noise is created. So you'd need to figure out a tool to manage for that and what that looks like and gain some facts relating to it. So you can start the review of the criteria and determine if, if it's pertinent to keep the public hearing open and seek more information. And that might be a cleaner first pass through the criteria if you seem unsure whether a decision is forthcoming tonight.
Is it done by decimal levels?
I believe so.
Evaluation, is that the way you, is so your machines are set at certain decimal levels, hard, hard, hardwired or hard-lined or whatever? Nobody can change it, and you use the same numbers for everybody that comes in, no matter what the.
Again, I think it's similar to the other one that that's even count less occupancy with a bigger home than the other one that was approved down the street away. So I think we cover a lot of it with the same one-year probationary period. And then prove that they
I don't know how else you'd be able to put.
Because you're not going to be able to test it any other way, any given thing that's going to make sense, I think, for us. And that other property was able to do that and come back and show how, how they proceeded for that year. So, and I think that.
As long as there's a good standard.
Sensitive to gap, and the owner sensitive to that. Make sure the system is up and working and show, and come back with reports to show everything. And if there was a complaint, they can show what it shows in the complaint. And with that, it also would be like a verified complaint that that there's an issue, but that's my thoughts.
Well, I, I agree. The launch is standard to equal for everybody.
Yeah.
I think your difference in this application is I don't have any information relating to screening criteria. So a lot of the success of that other property in their annual report and initial approval process was they imposed upon themselves an above and beyond screening criteria for guest groups, which is not included within what call city code. So you're not comparing apples to apples because this is a different and unique application, but if you want to know a difference between them, there is no special above and beyond screening criteria provided at this time.
I'm just like, they, they know what the rules are and the onus is on them, but really. Not going to go well, I would say, for future, so. We can go through that, but I don't know that, I want to put like determining what noise devices and.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's their own place that you, you gotta use them. I mean, you use them for one group, you gotta use them for, for all, I would say.
I'm just saying, I'm not going to dictate that they need to have noise devices, or they need to have this, or they need to have that, or the other. They know the requirements under their seven vehicles, and there's fourteen people max in this. And so if you go above that and you're discovered, or the, or your people are rowdy and you don't take care of that, it's reasonable, then that's not going to look good for renewal. And even, it could get pulled even before the year's up, you know, for.
Yeah, based on violations of the local code.
Have you had many people that you had to throw out before they had their, if we do their stay?
If never, we've never actually actually told anyone down. We warned them, we told them they would be.
It's long down and it worked out for you. Good.
Twenty years, I've never evicted anyone.
I think the you, you know, like I said, it'd be nice to grant them a year of a trial, but that puts the onus on the neighbors to put up with the demonstrated issues that, that have already happened. I just think that's an imposition on the neighbors, though. Mr. Peterson has property rights, and so do his neighbors.
I don't know, you want to do something where you said you, you violate these specific rules and regulations, it's maybe something even more than the contract within the one-year period, and you'll lose your ability to rent.
I think they just won't be able to rent for ten.
Well, that, that part's already, is that already in place then? Okay.
Yeah, they can, and so they're basically having four more people there.
Yeah.
Other than without permit. Like. I think they should have the opportunity to based on that and having the extra supervision of one-year renewal.
Yeah. I agree.
You want us to go through this?
I think it would be helpful, because then it can show us if there's any criteria that we don't know if they're currently met. And as a reminder, for your conditional use permit criteria of approval, you have to meet any affirmative all twelve. So you can't do eleven, you can't do ten, you can't do eleven and a half. Has to be twelve. And so if there's any of them, based on the evidence that you have and that's been presented to you, not based on your hope that enforcement will help, because that would not be an affirmative satisfaction of the criteria, for example. Do we need to get more information? The one that I'm, I'm guiding you towards in, in recommending we touch the criteria is I don't hear confidence that we have a plan for noise at this time. I think that we have some ideas for parking. But I think going through this list and figuring out, do you have the evidence in the record to say that's not going to create excessive noise? I solemnly swear. I'm interested to hear your thoughts.
So I guess what.
And Bill is floating in the ether.
Nice. Looking good, Bill.
Thank you. I don't hear that very often. Commissioners and Mr. Chair. I mean, I think we're having a really good discussion, and we're really getting to the heart of some of the issues associated with, with this application. My recommendation to you, though, is I think that those concerns and issues that you've identified should be discussed in the context of the criteria applicable to the application. So, you know, I appreciate the conversation that's gone on, but you know, I think we should, as Meredith is saying, let's orient towards the criteria in our code that are applicable to this application and, and express our concerns there. And if we need more information or, you know, or, or maybe we know which way we want to go after that discussion, but I think that's probably the most constructive way to go. Happy to answer any questions.
I guess we've got to just read the standards, right? Nine of them?
There's twelve.
Well, there's in the CUP.
Indeed.
So you want nine and twelve?
Uh, I think we should start with the, the conditional use permit standards from code section three thirteen oh three, because those are the more specific ones. And they'll have to meet all of the other ones specifically applicable to short-term rentals anyway, in order to meet these ones. So that's my recommendation. Would you like to begin? Okay, number one. It must constitute a conditional use authorized in the zone involved. Correct. This is a, a conditional use is how you get going on a this thing in this zone. Okay. Two, it must be harmonious with and in accord with the general objectives and any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and/or this title. Examples include, we wish to provide a variety of housing types, cultivate a recreation tourism destination, and have ways that we cultivate the enjoyment and reasonable facilitation of property ownership in the McCall area. So a lot of broad philosophical goals.
I think it fits.
Okay, number three, it must be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or likely character of the neighborhood, and that such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area. So this is a funky one, because you have an existing large-scale home in a neighborhood of sometimes large-scale homes that operates in a way that, in many ways, the state has decided is a certain way, meaning it is a residential use. We do not get to say otherwise, but can it be cultivated to be compatible with the surrounding things going on?
I think the case of fourteen people access in the right because other people smaller size, so you don't want a big thing in that's quiet.
I, I know there are other short-term rentals in Spring Mountain Ranch. But I think as I said in the previous application, that this does not, this is not harmonious with the existing character of the neighborhood.
You have a why?
Because it's mostly a residential neighborhood.
Say it is, I guess, because, I mean, there is a mixture of them both throughout Holy Spring Mountain Ranch and the whole area.
But only two this big. Would, if we, if we approve this one, this is only the second one that's this big.
In the whole Spring Mountain area?
Correct. There's only two. There's only two this big.
There are numerous.
Greater than ten.
There's numerous large homes throughout the area that have family gatherings or sits, it's not being rented. So, I mean, it's there's still large homes with large amounts of people throughout the area.
Family, grandpa.
Personal use, yeah.
Mixed opinions on three. Number four, it should not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use.
Size of home allows for the residents management of the property with following health and safety inspections and other due processes.
Yeah, I agree. I think it covers that.
Okay, number five, should not cause any substantially harmful environmental consequences to any land or waters within the planning jurisdiction.
Yeah.
How close are they to the water treatment plant?
Ways. Number six, not create excessive additional public cost for public facilities and services and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. So initially, this one was a little bit hazy because of the water meter sizing issue, but the applicant has indicated willingness to properly size the water meter so that there is no water going missing in transfer water between the public service and private property. I can't think of any other public cost generated.
Additional tax.
You do get revenue for L O T.
Okay, number seven, be adequately served by essential public facilities and services, including highways, streets, police, and fire, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water and sewer, and schools. The applicant may be required as a condition of approval to mitigate any deficient public service. Again, relating to the water meter, that was a question initially, but there is indication that that can be resolved. I've received no comments from any public agencies that there is a harm created.
Okay.
Okay, number eight, not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that will cause unreasonable production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors, or other forms of pollution.
I always like these, you know, what's the level of unreasonable when there's there's snowmobile trailers on the street, but because regardless of whether or not you can, you're allowing them to bring their trailers, they have to go somewhere in town. Correct? Whether you're taking out, you know, I don't know, where you park a trailer overnight if you can't park it in the in the residence you're staying at.
Mill Road Parking Lot or the golf course.
That's okay?
Yes.
It is. I didn't know that. Really?
Public service announcement.
People that are staying in residence, especially snowmobilers, they're, they're going to find a place where they can park right up close to the building so they can walk in and don't worry about that.
Yeah, like, I mean, it was in my eyes view of the front door of the house in most cases because they get thousands of dollars wrapped up in trailers and everything else.
So if you're concerned about snowmobile trailer parking, is there a material or a piece of information that you would like to see that mitigates snowmobile trailers appearing?
They already said they don't allow.
Yep.
So.
Do you need to know anything else about enforcement?
I think it's within their contract as far as enforcing it.
I didn't see it in Ben Wright's contract.
Well, within the rules of that particular unit.
I'm confused. What's the benefit of not allowing snowmobile trailers?
I don't think there is a benefit.
I can tell you there's a cost.
Yeah, there sure is. Does it cost you to park over at the golf course? If you have a snowmobile trailer?
Not yet.
A good answer.
But I mean.
Well, it's a big issue.
You know. What about, what about the post office and also the, let's see, other place over there by the marina? They could do the same thing with those areas too, where parking?
I can't speak to that, but I think, I don't there's a couple of situations going on. One is the snowmobile trailer parking has not been identified an issue when this parking is most critical. So when we're snow plowing, if there's a snowmobile trailer or a moped that's in our way, you're going to get ticketed. Now, most of the times they get a warning first, they get a ticket and the police department pulls their plate and they see if they've issued a ticket. What we have problems with throughout the community, not just snowmobile trailers, but contractors mostly, is they have to, they have to work on their property or they have to come pick up their residents to go snowmobiling and they're parking in the middle of the road. And then vehicles now have to drive around them. Small enough, you know, there's only two lanes, there's no shoulder to park. So I don't feel like, you know, as the public works director, we don't have a mechanism to change this. Certainly not in one CUP application are we going to be able to address that unless you were to say, we want you to provide X number of snowmobile trailer parking spaces on your property. Then that would mitigate the issue with them parking on the street for a temporary period of time.
No.
We're also talking about pollution right now, so as a reminder. This was the one relating to noise that I don't know. I have your consensus and confidence that you can affirm that noise will not be created with the information you have, unless you feel, you feel good. And I'm wrong.
I just don't know how I always saw that. What do we put in place to make sure noises? It's already within the code.
I think previous things that we've done, when we haven't understood the noise generated by a property is we've had an applicant run a series of scenarios on their property where, for example, maybe at a certain time, they know that they're running a lawnmower next to a device and then they play a boombox next to a device and then somebody yells at someone next to a device. And then we get an example, noise aware device report or whatever company it is that shows us what aligns with the lawnmower, the yelling person, the boombox and shows us what, what does that generate outwards to the neighbors? And how do we know that that's being monitored effectively? For other people, we haven't had the devices so much yet. Somebody stood a hundred feet away and started making a bunch of noises and then somebody recorded on their phone. The last time we did this was probably like the natural grocery grocery store and things making like beeps in the back parking lot next to a neighborhood. But that's how we tested it before. But if you guys aren't concerned about noise created, it's your decision.
I think it's tough because any, any residential home has the ability to go out and have noise up until ten o'clock, whether it's two persons or ten or twelve or fourteen. And so for us to create an additional ordinance or more restrictive than the current code, I don't know if we have the ability to be more restrictive than what current code allows for every home.
You do on a conditional use.
Well, but still, we can't create noise timeframes, I don't believe.
You can.
You do.
Feel there is a reason and justification, you can impose greater conditions, specific conditions of approval. But I don't know if you have the reason. I don't know if you.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, voices carrying stuff with people talking, I just don't see creating other than maybe the potential one year thing and see if there's issues. I don't know how, like, say, monitoring, but, okay, lawnmower going with a radio out there and don't see the benefit of that.
Number eight, nah, oh, wait, we already did eight. Number nine, have particular approaches to the property so designed as to not create a detrimental interference with traffic on surrounding public or private thoroughfares or adversely affect pedestrian environment. Your driveway design.
I think this one with the loop driveway, it makes it safer most to get out there because they're in front down the road instead of backing into the roadway.
Number ten, not result in the destruction, loss or damage of any important natural, scenic or historic features.
No, it's working.
I'd say no.
Okay, number eleven, be on a site of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed use, including the yards, open spaces, now storage walls, fences, parking areas, loading zones and design standards applicable.
It's large. That's fine.
Okay, number twelve, have a minimal negative economic impact on the neighborhood or surrounding community.
Yes.
That's a no.
Fine, I guess. I don't know how you can say, I mean, there's homes around the area that still have the values and probably quantify, show negative value. I don't know how you're going to do it.
You should not happen.
I think it's no different than, do you want a storage unit across the street from them? Do you want a car to, at short term rental next to you? It's an economic impact.
But your property values don't go down. Property values don't go down, no. It's not the same argument that you would make.
I would tell you, I wouldn't buy my house today knowing that the other half is a short term rental.
I can tell you that, yeah, values overall area not gone down because we've brought in short term rentals more, not brought in, but, you know, values of the area dramatically increased since the timing of that. Now, this could, house use could change if they ever sell it down the road and changes something else. Or you could have a house with fourteen people living in it full time with twelve kids running around the yard, which is going to be way more noise on a consistent basis. With a short term rental, half the time it's going to be empty as well. So, I mean, there is obviously, but I think part of that is with short term rental is oversight. And if they, if a noise does become a problem, they can, you know, lose their permit.
So do you feel ready to close the public hearing, enter your deliberations and decide? You have everything you need? Or is it late?
Well, I think we should, we all been here, I think we should go ahead and complete. Or at least is there enough to wrap it up or?
Nobody's going to kick you out.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're pretty much right there.
Set of decision makers, which is not a good thing for Meredith writing any findings and conclusions.
I think they've stayed this long and deserve just to try to complete.
Okay.
I agree with you, Chairman, in premise, but I do not have very good deliberations here for findings and conclusions. I just need to provide you that information. I do not have anything really referenced in the record. So I just have to state for you, I don't really know what to base your findings and conclusions on at this time.
You're not saying, so you're not saying table this to a future?
Either I need more justification for why you feel that the conditions are satisfied because I can't invent them for you, like reference the materials you've got or continue it to a time where we have more brain cells because it's not nine thirty P M. So that we can get the deliberations clean and Bill is here as well.
Looking good still.
Thanks, man. Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I mean, I think Meredith really articulated pretty well what I, what I was going to say, which is, remember when we had our workshop, we talked about how we have to connect our deliberations and our decisions on various elements of the criteria to specific parts of the record. And so, I mean, if you're up to that task tonight, then let's go for it. But, you know, this one might be one that we want to consider the record that we've received and then come back, come back at another meeting and where we can say specifically, we think that this is or this criteria is or is not met on the basis of these facts that we received in the record. So if you're up to that tonight, then let's do it. But if you want to take some time to consider the record and make a good, well reasoned decision, I think Meredith is saying, you know, so far we're not there and we've got a ways to go tonight.
My main of concern are number three and number eight. Because I did not hear, and we can enter deliberations if you want to do that for number three and eight and encompass the other conditions into that by reference. But I think I need to hear more reference to what you've got to resolve those for me to be able to write findings and conclusions.
Now, Commissioner, what do you think?
So this, you know, we've had a lot of, we went through all these conditions. They all have to be acceptable. At least a couple of us have said that we don't believe one or two or three of them are acceptable. So I guess I'm like, okay, we deny it because it doesn't meet the standards of a conditional use permit.
And I don't know. We don't all agree on that.
We don't all agree on that. So we sort of make a motion and we vote.
And you also are obligated, if there are revisions or further information that can resolve non satisfaction of a criteria, you have to give the applicant an opportunity to satisfy it within the record by submitting more material. We don't get to say, nope, that's it.
What if we're mixed on opinion of an item?
Yep. Then your options are majority of the group or you continue to another meeting where more of you are present to weigh in and have an opinion. Or you duel your motions out, but either way, I think three and eight are where I have a split group that doesn't have much to reference.
Again, I mean, what do we think as a group to do this tonight or?
I kind of like the idea of having bodies here. Get maybe a little bit more information from people that think that we haven't thought about. They're not trying to dodge the issue of doing it tonight or not doing it tonight. I'm just saying, that's kind of, that sounds kind of interesting.
Meredith or Bill, if the vote is two to two, what happens?
I don't know. It's a good question. Bill, if we have a tie, what happened? Do I get?
Yeah, I mean, whatever the motion is, the motion would not pass.
Okay. I think at this point, we're discussing if we can get through tonight and just three and whatever it was, eight specifically, if we want to move forward off that point, because we got to get past that point before we do a motion. So Meredith has clear thinking. So what do we think?
I don't mean to be a weenie, but I'm kind of tired. And under the circumstances, I've never, I used to hear this from a lot of people. A meeting that goes longer than two and a half hours.
It does not make good things.
It is in a meeting. And we bear that timeframe about an hour and a half ago.
Indeed.
So.
I think it would be helpful to myself as staff that will inherit enforcement of anything relating to this. And I think it would be helpful to you guys to see more information on what noise management looks like, especially in this context where we have a history of noise being created. And we, as the local government, do not receive the noise reports from these magical computers that monitor people. So an example of what we would, what we would be relying on to understand what's happening in neighborhoods, I think can provide us more information. I think that's, that's why I'm like nudging you towards it because I think it could help build consensus in our split group right now. And it's important that you guys get a good decision document. I understand the time and the patience that the applicant has spent here and the time that the neighborhood has spent living with this use. But I think it's most important that you guys get your decision documents right at the end of the day.
I can understand, I can see your point too, Robert. I mean, yeah.
Bill? And so that means we need some more information from the applicant and do some sound testing their equipment. I think it was suggested just what are the different voices, different sounds and prove that it works correctly at different residents, I guess. Show reports of what that looks like.
Yeah.
Or specs of the system. So it shouldn't go with that and what it does, what it's capable of.
What else is out there these days? I don't know.
Well, they've already, yeah, we've got the system. Or, or at least provide us information on what they're already doing.
Yes, we're able to understand it.
All right. Do a motion to continue? Well, if we're looking to that, is there anything else we need from? Well, I think maybe specs of current system and how, I mean, it should have specs of what it's going to read and
If we continue it, we have to open the public hearing again.
You're still.
And I guess my, the other thing, I, it may be, I don't know if it's in here because I, there was a lot of this other things, but I'd love to see what you, when you get into your home, what, what, wait. What the?
The manual?
Yeah, the manual. What's how it is and just say, this is what we find and this is what we show them. And I mean, that would be good to see as a commission, I guess, for if we're going to.
Well, short term rentals is a big deal in this town. You know, a lot, a lot of money changes hands on short term rentals in this town. So I think we should be accurate as we possibly can. And if that means taking information from just done right, property managers, that's, that's beneficial to us. It's usually beneficial to me. I think everybody in the room, if you think about it, it probably could be beneficial to all of us.
Ready? Quick to close anything first, I move to continue CUP twenty three ten to the April sixth meeting to time for staff and the applicants.
Maybe six.
Basic, please.
We don't want to come back in five days.
Thank you.
On Sunday.
This is April first. This is April first.
Meeting, uh, to allow time for staff and applicant to provide more information on the following. Specific information on the noise monitoring. The specific manual for this rental house, the specific rental contract for this house.
Great. The other thing that was mentioned was, um, if you wanted to allow trailers, little bill trailers. Um, so instead of having seven cars, how many trailers would you have? What would be?
A trailer parking plan?
Right.
There you go, you know. So right now, there is a trailer parking program as far as uh, some wheel trailers are concerned.
There's nothing on this block.
No, no, no.
Let's just go with this block right now, let's see.
Okay, okay.
Do we have a motion? Second, motion and second, all in favor?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Can we be certain that the motion is to continue the public hearing, not just the application, but the public hearing?
Yeah, he got it.
Okay, I didn't hear public hearing, so um, my bad.
Who you didn't? I think he did.
Doesn't say it. I thought you mean.
Will you add a motion for the public hearing just for good measure?
Continue C U P twenty-three ten to the May sixth. Yeah.
Will you include?
Continue the public hearing, the C U P twenty-three ten, I'll say.
That works.
Second that.
Thank you.
A second, all in favor?
Hi.
If both, motion carries, okay.
Good job.
Nope, we got a couple things, any signs?
Brent, I'll email you in the morning to summarize, no one's awake anymore.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
So any signs we need to deal with?
No signs.
No sign?
No signs.
Anything important we need to really know about this, you ended in May sixth?
Um, it's going to be a long one, so I highly recommend that you bring with you available, um, or even tonight, if we could possibly choose a secondary date.
May's meeting, you're talking about?
May sixth.
May sixth.
So I'm wondering if we can set a second May date.
How've you been?
Try to figure a second May date right?
Yeah, because I'll need to public notice, I think some of them, to give them a sense of predictability.
Yeah, it's
No, we're not done yet, we're not done yet.
So two weeks after this, actually.
Throw out another one of those, um, just like what Moss did initially.
Wait, 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 Samuel, focus, we need to set another meeting date.
So the first one's May sixth and, and that meeting in that same month and obviously.
Yes. Um, and the reason for doing so is we've got like four or five design reviews, uh, conditional use permit and rezone for the water treatment plant. We've got an annexation request for the state park, a section of peninsula, and then we've got, um, two preliminary plaids um, and a final plaque.
And then this.
And
Last.
Yeah, and just, yeah.
Yeah.
And we want to include this one in the first meeting?
Yes. Yeah, and so then I need to divvy up who to public notice just for a second meeting because I would prefer we're not here until ten o'clock on May sixth.
I'm fairly open to these, you wanna stick with the Tuesday?
Do you wanna keep Tuesday or do you wanna do Thursdays to like do a two for a week?
Maybe Tuesday and Thursday, one week for me?
One week, can we do that?
Oh.
I mean, we better skip it to have staff have time to deal with.
Yeah, they probably need to catch their breath over there. Would think it would be all right, but
I mean, what?
Wait, so Dave and Nathan, can you hold on on the side conversation? Cause I'm pretty sure our recording is still going and it's not gonna make any sense in the world. Uh, so until, until we get this part worked out, look at what date did we wanna look at?
Oh, I just threw out adding Thursday of that same week.
Okay.
But is that?
Ooh, that might be a city council meeting, let me check.
Oh, probably, yeah.
Yeah, Thursdays are
Well, that's the first week and it was the second.
Scrolling, scrolling.
First full week in May.
And that's it.
Maybe you're probably right, yeah.
So Monday, May fifth is the next joint impact area meeting. And then Tuesday, May sixth is planning and zoning.
Right, one month?
And then oh, gotta scroll, splits the week, Wednesday, May seventh is the local option tax committee, so Dave, you're gonna have a bad week.
I am.
Thursday. Yeah, Thursday, May eighth is city council. Friday, May ninth.
Uh, we don't wanna do a Friday.
Okay.
So do the following Tuesday?
See, Tuesday. So Tuesday, May thirteenth, there is no conflict in this room.
So that's a second day then, right?
Well, so we do.
About the twentieth?
Just so you don't have to put two back.
That's a Sunday or weekend.
Well, she would put one and just.
And you'd have to review two full packets week after week, because you're not just gonna have like one application on that second meeting. You'll have probably two six hundred page packets.
I think we should do the sixth and the twentieth, the twentieth works for everybody.
Yeah, the twentieth appears to be open, and you wanna do four thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now we got that, Sony, you ready?
I'm making motion that we adjourn this meeting at nine, nine, nine fifty.
I need a second, a second, a motion second all favor. Hi, if you opposed, you'll get shot.
Yes.
Well done.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. Oh, he's gone. He left.